Thank you, Rob. Thank you. I'll call the committee, the whole meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item in this budget? Not seeing any. We have it. Sorry? What did I say? Sorry, this agenda, not this budget. Well, somebody's paying attention. Yep. Well, yeah, there's so much that could be said, but I'm not going there this morning. So, all right, let's move on to, we have a delegation this morning. Uh, DePica is going to Gupta is going to introduce our guest this morning. So come on up to Pika. Welcome.
Good morning, County Council. Today, I would like you all to introduce to a very special project. And that's an initiative which is very close to GB Lips Heart. Uh, that's penciling it in project initiated by two wonderful young community members. And I personally would like to thank Kim to take this initiative on to be, uh, you know, to present here. And these members are Ayla Graham and Gia Kukreja. Uh, at GB Lip, we recognize the importance of sharing and preserving the stories of immigrants who have journeyed here from all over the world to seek better life. And this project has provided a platform to share those success stories. And most importantly, three things in the, in the project is the unique narratives, like each one is different. Um, hi- highlighting their challenges and community support and their con- and the contribution of immigrants to Gray Bruce region. Uh, GB Lip is supporting this initiative in terms of community outreach and um, sharing this important resource with our over sixty-seven stakeholders. Uh, we have brought some books for all of you as well. And I personally believe that amplifying and sharing these narratives and experiences will help our community to understand and embrace the diversity that really is now trying to define us. Uh, over, I would like to welcome Ayla, who is here with us. And Gia could not join us in person as she's away for some work. And we have the video regarding.
Okay, um, yeah, we have a video. I'm here on behalf of Gia and myself to represent the pencil project. And to include Gia, we do have a video recording of our presentation that we would like to share with you guys. And then I'm here for questions after as well.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share our exciting initiative. My name is Gia.
My name is Ayla.
And we are the project coordinators for the pencil project.
The inspiration for this project was driven from statistics showing that the Gray and Bruce counties had low immigration retention rates. Upon conducting our own research, we concluded that the individuals that do decide to move away from the area choose to do so as they are unaware of the resources. Moreover, they feel alone in a journey of immigration. So we asked ourselves, how could we help with the problem?
We created the pencil project in hopes the stories collected would highlight the opportunities available in the Gray and Bruce counties while increasing immigration retention rates. They would also serve as an inspiration to newcomers. We collected success stories of first generation immigrants and published them in a book titled penciling it in. It was our hope that community members become more aware of resources implemented in these counties that can help others in their immigration journey.
This project holds importance for us as we are both first generation immigrants ourselves.
My parents moved to Canada in twenty fifteen to provide me with opportunities to become successful in life. My parents were well off in India. When we came here, I watched them struggle. To begin, my parents struggled to get employment in the area. That's stressful because they both know that they needed to provide for their family. As for me, I struggled in my own ways. I faced my own challenges like language and culture shock that I needed to overcome. My parents' work ethic inspired me. Gray and Bruce counties are truly welcoming and supporting of individuals who are starting a new chapter in their lives.
I immigrated to Canada from China at the age of two. I was adopted by Caucasian family and coming at such a young age prevented me from having some of the more common barriers immigrants face such as language and employment issues. However, a factor that I did majorly face was a lack of culture. I was able to connect with certain community members and had the opportunity to learn more about my culture growing up. What's interesting is that both Gia and my story were very different from each other. But this was something we wanted to embrace was the differences of these immigrants. And while creating diversity and inclusion, we also had the inspiration to focus more on the success than that they've had rather than their negative experiences.
Let's discuss the process of this initiative. The timeline for this initiative was from June of twenty twenty-three to January twenty twenty-four. This consisted of promotional outreach, fundraising and community engagement activities. Following these, the formation of the book's publication began in December and was completed in January.
We started this project by planning out finances and reaching out to organizations who would support our initiative by recommending community members as candidates for our book. We applied to several grants, started this GoFundMe and received many private donations. We were able to reach our goal and printed two hundred copies of the book published by Quick Print, which was a local business in Own Sound.
We would like to thank the following organizations who have helped and supported our project. A special thank you to the YMC Sediment Services, Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnerships and the Gray Bruce Welcome Communities for their contribution. The Owensound Library has also generously offered us their space for the book launch without any costs. Moreover, local businesses like the European Bakery have donated food for the event. We could not have done this project without their support.
The promotional aspect consists of using different marketing channels such as a website, social media platforms and presentations to promote this initiative. An Instagram and Facebook account were created. Booths were set up at different events to promote the project as well. And a website pencilproject.ca was also set up. It highlighted who we are and the goal of the pencil project. On the website, there's also a place where you can leave any inquiries or email for contact. Moreover, we had advertisements placed for our projects throughout the community and media.
Lastly, we would like to formally invite all of you to our book launch on March twenty eighth. It will be held at Owensound Public Library from five thirty PM to eight PM. Signed copies of the book and food will be available as well. Please feel free to bring your friends and family.
If you're interested in supporting our project, we are fundraising to do a second printing of roughly two hundred copies of the book.
Thank you for your time today. These are the following resources where you can contact us if you have any questions. You can also find more information about the initiative from this QR code that is linked to our website called pencilproject.ca.
Thank you for that presentation and, and I see the books have been distributed to council members and thank you for those. It has, uh, it's long been a question of mine in a former capacity. I used to see people that were probably immigrants to Canada. And I'd ask them, why Canada? Why here? And the stories were amazing that I'd hear from people of why they would uproot themselves, their family and leave everything they've known and held dear and come here. It, it, I've long said that the best Canadian is a well-traveled Canadian because we don't appreciate what we have until it's gone. But I, I, I'm looking forward to looking through the stories here in the book because I think it'll be very illuminating as to why we have such a great country here that we do. All right, enough for me. Uh, any questions for, uh, for Ayla? Right? Ayla, yes. I had an Aunt Ayla, so I, that name is, is easy for me. Kim, go ahead.
Pilot, um, I think there's another part to this project that we really want to celebrate. Can you say a few words about the, the DECA organization and the competition that you're part of?
So we created this project underneath DECA guidelines and DECA is an extracurricular and it's a business competition. So we competed at provincials, which was held in Toronto. And we had to do a business proposal as well as a fifteen-minute presentation. And then we qualified for internationals, so we will be attending internationals in Anaheim, California at the end of April.
Well, we certainly wish you the best of luck in that. Counselor Greg, do you have a question?
Well, I think you did an amazing job on this project, so, uh, we better ask a, a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned early on, uh, about people moving away from Gray Bruce counties. Uh, I would think that would be quite a challenge to maintain connections and, and be informed about why people moved away. So how were you able to connect with these people that had moved away from, from our area that you were using? Uh, as a, as a resource and kind of a central part of your project? Yeah, maybe the answers are in the book, uh, but perhaps, uh, if you know them right now, that'd be great. Thank you.
We analyzed different statistics from Statistics Canada as well as a local organization that sort of just said, um, a lot of people were moving away. So they showed like the amount of people that were coming in during a certain year and then the same amount that were leaving. And we found that there was a modest net increase of the amount of people leaving. And then from GNI's research, we conducted a survey of community members to kind of see how aware of the resources available for newcomers they were. And we found that the, the general idea was that people weren't aware of resources. So we concluded that a lot of the reason was for not know, not being aware of these resources.
Any other questions? Counselor Kentner.
I, I just, is there anything we as individuals can do, uh, because we're all interested in our immigrants, but uh, we find it hard to really jump in and assist it. What, what's the easiest or most practical thing we can do to support? And, and especially do to encourage them to stay in Gray Bruce? Thank you.
I think the biggest thing would be better promotion for these resources. In the last two pages of the book, we did dedicate, uh, different resources and ways you can contact these resources as well. And I think the, um, newcomer services within Gray and Bruce counties are the most important things for these immigrants coming here.
Counselor Ackles.
Uh, thank you, Warden. I want to through you to Ayla. As you said, was there any research on where individuals were going when they were leaving Gray Bruce? Thank you for the book, but I'm sometimes called a speed reader and, but I haven't read it through yet, so I don't know. Um, yeah, and I guess, you know, why they would move away? Because there's sixteen counselors sitting around this table that believe Gray County, you can't get anything better in Canada than right here in Gray County. But as you said, the immigrants are here and then moving away. So was there any idea of where they were going and possibly what?
We didn't look into specific statistics of where they were going, but we did have some candidates who shared family members who decided to not stay in the Gray Bruce counties. And their main reasoning was going towards, uh, bigger cities where they would have more of the same culture present there or even just access to some of their cultural foods too. So kind of just the sense of having other people like similar to you rather than in a small rural community.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jennifer.
If I may, uh, through you, uh, Warden Melon to Ayla. Um, we, um, I, I am the director of long-term care for the, for the county and we have three long-term care homes. And we are welcoming on a much more regular basis, um, new Canadians as our team members, but also as our residents. And, uh, I just love this project and I wanted to, um, put, make a formal invitation when you're back perhaps from the, from the competition. Uh, if you would come and, uh, meet with our residents and some of our teams, we're doing work on equity, diversity, inclusion and belonging. And I think this is a really wonderful local, um, initiative that we would like to bring into the home. So I'll extend that invitation formally. I'll follow up in email, but, um, great job. Thanks for this.
Thank you for that opportunity and I would definitely let Gia know and you're very interested.
Counselor Matrosos.
Uh, thank you through you, the warden, as the daughter of two immigrants. I very much appreciate the work that you are doing here. Um, and wondered on that same note, if, if it's a possibility, could our local libraries approach you for, for a speaking opportunity to share more about it? I'm thinking in particular because of the, the way in which commu- uh, libraries operate as community hubs and are often the first place people start to drop in to get to know other people. But also because of the, the literary value as well, the fact that you've actually produced a book. It would be wonderful if we knew the story behind it before it goes on one of our shelves.
Yes, definitely. Gia and I's hope was to distribute these books to all public libraries within Gray and Bruce counties as well as schools. So we've distributed them to Bruce County, but we are currently about to go on a road trip once Gia comes back to distribute these books to, um, public libraries within the Gray County. And then we would also love the opportunity to speak at certain libraries if that would be something we'd like.
Gray County Road Trip, right on. I don't remember distributing books in any of the tours I took, but anyway, nonetheless, it sounds like fun. Uh, any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, Ayla. Thank you so much for your presentation this morning and, and extend our thanks to Gia as well.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, I would just like to add what Gia, uh, Ayla has just mentioned about two questions here. Uh, Councilor was asking about what as an individual we can do. Uh, GB Lip has developed a positive messaging campaign where the main focus is just to smile. I think as an individual, if we, you know, build that individuality of like just to smile at your neighbors. So we have developed that campaign with great resources, which is on our website and we have shared with our partners as well, including all municipalities. So as an individual, I just say that if you just smiled, that will help them stay. So I know other challenges are there, but that is the process. Uh, and to your question, uh, Councilor, where, why they are going and where they are going? We will be able to find that out soon by the end of March thirty-first because we have, GB Lip has done one, not one, like first of its immigrant survey for twenty twenty-three. Uh, and we have all these questions that how they see themselves in the next five to ten years. Do they see themselves here? If yes, why? If not, why? So just to add on there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, DePica. Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And that just brings to mind a thought to Pika. Something to consider perhaps at the county level, a project that we're undertaking in Meaford for our hundred and fiftieth, which is a hello campaign. And every week we are asked to say hello in a different language. This week is Korean. I can't pronounce it, but there is a poster in Meaford that has the fifty-two different languages and how to say hello. And we're all doing that, just, just hello. So just to add to the smile, if that might be a project you'd like to consider.
We have been in connection with, um, Mary Solomon from Meaford, who has initiated, I guess, this, uh, another uh, project called Diversity Forest as well, uh, and, and Community Gardens. And we have been in constant touch with her and we will really appreciate if we can somehow, uh, connect and push this message forward throughout the Bruce. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Um, next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there any determination of items requiring separate discussion? Oh, I need a mover and seconder, sorry. Counselor Hutchison, Counselor DeBreen. Counselor Nielsen wants to pull an item. Okay. Oh, there he is there. Go ahead, Dane. Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Warden Melon. I'd like to pull six A, please.
Six A, okay. Any others? All right, so the motion is to receive all of those, save and accept six A. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. And moving on, items for direction and discussion. Support Outreach Services. Kevin McNabb is going to give a verbal update on that, uh, that particular project. Kevin, welcome. Good morning.
Morning, Council. My warden. Let me bring the presentation up. Great, thanks. I just wanted to come today and, uh, and give you a bit of an update on, uh, support outreach services and really to say thanks as well as due to some changes. But I was thinking about this, actually, when I put this slide together and I don't think we've talked about this yet. And I think that, uh, we should talk about it because it's a really good story and, uh, for, for work that's really tough. And, uh, in, in need hope, uh, this picture here is a logo that we use for SOS and, uh, it's come up for three years now that we've had SOS. And we talk about people with recovery. And the story with this is, this is a young man that had addiction problems and he connected with the team. And this person now is reconnected back with his family, working full-time. And he wanted to give back to SOS. He developed this for us. So this is our model. We think about it every day and that's just a good way to start, I think, uh, with the works that's happening on the street because it is tough. So, uh, we had recently had some changes, uh, within SOS and we really wanted to reach out and say thanks to the city of Owensound and the Owensound Farmers Market. When we first, uh, um, started SOS, uh, it was started in Hanover and then we moved fairly quickly to Owensound. Uh, they welcomed us with open arms to the market downtown, which was a perfect place for us to offer our services. And, uh, we've been there for a couple of years and it's been a great location for us, especially, uh, being in the downtown to offer services to people. We go there every two weeks. We see between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty people and make connections with them. And these are all our partners that come together, over twenty-five partners now, uh, between municipalities, uh, health system providers, and then also our charitable organizations that come together. And we actually, we meet every two weeks too. And, uh, there's no mandate for people to come, but our operations meetings full every two weeks we have for an hour. And our whole sole goal is to support people in the community that are homeless or precariously housed and have mental health and addictions. So I just wanted to say thank you to Owensound for, uh, having us there for the last, uh, a couple of years and all their support. And, and I can't say enough about Owensound, Hanover, Meaford, West Gray and Southgate. They give us a place, uh, to meet and, uh, connect with people. So, uh, but we have had some, uh, 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 change and it came from a suggestion with Osher. They recently had, uh, uh, some changes within their building. It's going to allow us a, a, a more, an improved location for people to come together, to sit, uh, better temperature regulation for, for heat and cold and accessible washrooms. And something that we've really been missing is a, is a private space to do adequate health assessments and, and counseling. So, uh, Osher's opened their doors to us and we're so excited, uh, to be a part of them and be there with them. Uh, at our markets now, everybody can still fit. It's roughly the same size. And, uh, and you can see in, around the corner in the back, there's, there's actually a separate room now, uh, where our nurse practitioner and, uh, most likely in the future, a physician and our paramedics and our mental health counselors will be able to, uh, treat people. And, uh, there'll be a washroom right off of there if we're doing urine testing and stuff like that. People don't have to walk through a bunch of places to, to get their urine tested. And, uh, just a really nice location and we're so thankful to, uh, Osher, uh, for volunteering that space. And, uh, we've got to love a good community, uh, Owensound Family Health Team. Uh, they heard about this and working with Dr. Cox and our nurse practitioner, Heather practitioner. Uh, they've actually donated, uh, uh, an assessment bed, which, uh, you know, us paramedics, we're used to working on our stretcher and on the ground. But, uh, Heather, our nurse practitioner, likes her assessment bed and I'm sure Dr. Cox will too. Uh, but, uh, we have that now in our room and they give us all the equipment to go along with it. We said a bit of labor to get it there, but it was all free. And, uh, um, looking forward to that. And the goal is, uh, we offer this every two weeks, but, uh, we're working on some ways to connect with people outside of that, to offer primary care for people that are unattached, uh, to give them healthcare and addictions, therapy and, and mental health supports. So, uh, really good news. And, uh, again, thanks to everybody for this work to happen. It's, everybody has to work together. Uh, it can't happen just one organization. It takes multiple organizations, people coming together to support. And, uh, again, like we go back to that first story of that motto, you know, there is hope and there is recovery and, and, uh, and again, but it takes all those people to do.
Like I say, Kevin, gotta love a good community, but it takes leaders such as yourself to make it happen too. So thank you for your efforts. Any questions on that particular item? Don't see any, but, uh, again, thank you very much, Kevin. Um, next item is a, uh, response time performance plan results for twenty twenty-three. Kevin's going to be, uh, talking to that one as well. I need a mover and a seconder, Counselor DeBreen and Counselor Kentner. Kevin, welcome again.
I've heard a couple of comments this morning about me versus Scott and you're stuck with me till lunch. So, uh, anyways, it once wouldn't have been bad, but I've heard it a couple of times now, so I'm, I'm, I'm aware of it. So I will try not to, uh, take too much of your time. So, uh, the recommendation that, uh, this report be received for the response time performance plan results and that we communicate these results by, uh, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So each year, uh, the, we put together response time, uh, performance plan targets, uh, in the summer and, uh, we have to submit them uh, before the end of October. And then in March of every year, we have to, uh, reply and, uh, post those results on a public, uh, website. We send them to the ministry and they put them up. Our response times, uh, that this new plan that, uh, or it's not new anymore, but the new, this version of plan has been around since two thousand and twelve. And it was, uh, determined based upon what the response times were at that time, uh, to meet these targets. Uh, before that was what they called the nineteen ninety-six percentile. And at that time for code four calls, it was fifteen minutes and fifty-four seconds. And then you hear us talk about fifteen minutes a lot. That's really where it comes from. There's a lot of history with that. So a paramedic services, uh, performance is measured, uh, based on achieving targets across the five C task categories and sudden cardiac arrest for a code for, uh, life-threatening calls. Despite our rising call volume, and I look back, uh, we're twice as many code fours than we were even in two thousand and four. Um, we've never, uh, increased our targets. We've improved upon them. We took our target for eight minutes or less, uh, for C task ones from fifty to sixty percent. And our C tasks three and four and five from thirty minutes, uh, to twenty minutes. As far as call volume goes, uh, just an update on that, uh, our call volume is the busiest year yet, was fifteen thousand and forty-six calls. When we looked at the modeling last fall, it would be, we were thinking around one percent. So it came in a bit under that point six four. Um, but if you look here, it's twenty-six point nine percent over the last five years. And if you look at the RH recommendations, it's probably about five point eight it averages out. Um, the thing with call volumes, you can't really just look at one year in a row. You have to look at multiple years because we may have a one percent one year or even a, a year where we actually have a reduction in calls. Then the next year you're up ten percent. So it's really over a period of time that we look at this and, uh, again, we're happy the call volume didn't go up any more than what it did, but then we'll take one percent or even a reduction if we can. But, uh, it's just, it's hard to, uh, um, uh, to, to predict this one percent of what it's going to look like going on, but we will continue to evaluate it. Around priority codes, uh, we just put this here just to help define because it does get people mixed up with C task versus priority codes dispatched. This is what a paramedic would hear when they're being dispatched. So a code one is transfer or called preferable call. Code two call is a, is a transfer, but with a book time. Code three is what we call a prompt call, which is an emergency, but it can be responded to with a delay. And, but that patient's deemed to be stable or under professional care and not immediate danger. The code for call was the most urgent where time is of the essence. It's like cardiac arrest, chest pain, strokes, uh, major traumas. Those are the ones where we focus our energy and these people are in immediate danger and time is crucial. So our targets are broken down into sudden cardiac arrest and C task one to five. A sudden cardiac arrest determines, uh, uh, is determined that by the ministry, uh, of six minutes that we have to be there. And then we look back at our history of and see what our success rate is on that. Uh, then we were determined that the time must be forty percent of the time. I know that doesn't sound like a high percentage, but when you look at what would takes, because that's really only what a five-minute drive time. But it doesn't, you have to look at your basis and how much you can cover. The next, uh, is determined by the ministry too, is eight minutes and we set the percentile. We can get a little further. Uh, again, we can get cover about sixty percent of the time that we can be there. The C task two, or C task, uh, two to five is established by the municipality and approved by the ministry. And we're able to set those targets and those targets have been in place other than when we approved upon them in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, where, uh, proceed task two is fifteen minutes, ninety percent of the time. And C task three to five is twenty minutes, ninety percent of the time. So when we look at C tasks and we really, it's kind of backwards, but we determine our response time after we already arrive at the patient. Uh, it's really more of a, uh, uh, really like a measurement more tool more than anything about it because we don't drive differently based upon C task. And we don't even know what it is till we get there. But when we get there, we grade the C task on arrival and then before we leave and then also on arrival at hospital. And it's an assessment tool to really to assess the gravity of a situation and the seriousness of the illness of the patient. So there's five levels of C task, C task one, which is the exact opposite. And this is where it gets confusing with the code priorities. So there's five levels of C task, C task one, which is the exact opposite and this is where it gets confusing with the code priorities. The code one's a transfer to a paramedic being sent out of the truck. In the truck, but the C task ones are most critical, that's a resuscitation cardiac arrest. The C task two is somebody like we're having a stroke, chest pain. C task three is a little less urgent, you know, mild shortness of breath, um you know, resolve seizures. C task four is less urgent, uh maybe a laceration controlled leading urinary tract infection, stable. And a C task five is really more of a non-urgent or preferable call. Percentile response time, which really uh drives our business here and uh we think about this a lot. And you'll hear us talk about eight minutes and fifteen minutes and with the RH, we talk about ten minutes. The goal isn't critical emergencies to get there as quick as possible. And uh so we you start to look at that and we try to do the most good for the most amount of people. You know, we can get better response times in in when we're close and living in a larger, more dense areas where it's more populated. But at the same time, we have to balance that out with uh response times across the county. And when you look at when we when we when we set the targets, it's at a ninety percentile. So the goal is to cover the majority of the people in this amount of time so people can trust it. And uh so a a ninetieth percentile, really what it does, there's different ways of doing it. If you if you set the night, the the ninetieth percentile at fifteen minutes, uh you know, a nine hundred of your calls have to below fifteen minutes and a hundred can be above. That's really what it boils down to, but um the best explanation I've had about a ninth percentile. Is it it's a balanced perspective that captures performance by the majority of users, so they get to be able to know and they can count on that service in that time. But it also recognized that there are rare exceptions and the rare exceptions are distance weather. Sometimes multiple calls happen, there's nothing worse. You could sit there for six hours in a town that does two or three calls a day and they come in back to back five minutes apart. And then you have, you only have one truck and they're coming from another town. So we can't control when the calls come in or how they come in, but we try to balance coverage across the whole county as best we can. So these are our response times uh for two thousand and twenty-three, uh very positive, uh fifty-four point six seven percent uh for cardiac arrest. Again, that's a five minute drive time. Um these ones here, um it's it's either a defibrillator or 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 paramedic unit getting on site, generally it's the paramedic medic unit getting on site. Uh C task ones is seventy-one point eight percent eight minutes. And sadly, I see this when our opioid crisis is high. A lot of the people we pick up are resuscitation, we have to ventilate them to keep them alive. And uh sadly, that's why that number is so high, it's been most of its year in the city. Uh C task two ninety-one point two three, we've had have trouble in the past with this number, uh usually around eighty-seven or eighty-eight percent. We've been just under that mark, but we have met there this year. I I look back and I think about, you know, this year versus last year, busier than the 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 year before and our response times are better. When you look at the weather, the weather does play a role. And when you think, well, we had snow again in in two thousand and twenty-two, really, but all the way through with two thousand and twenty-three, we really didn't have a lot of snow. And uh like it does make a difference over a period of time. And I would think that's probably the biggest thing that might help us meet this year. Because when I look back, the first two months of this year versus first two months, two thousand and twenty-three or ninetieth this year is about minute uh more than it was last year. And a lot of it is we've had more snow days. So anyways, I tried to look at those reasons why, but I think that's probably part of the weather does play a role. It does play a role where the calls come in too, like you know, we can't predict where the next call is going to be. And uh the C task three, four and five are well within the range for those. So uh I think it's important that we do look at uh um because we're assessed as a county, but it is good to look at the municipalities broken down. And uh even though we're not, we don't report on this, I think it's good that we bring it here for discussion. And and that, you know, the public sees that we are working to improve response times, not only just in the urban areas, but we're looking at improving them in the more rural areas. With adding Fever Sham and Eaton Thornberry and Cobble Beach. So when you look at uh this here, um Barbara had a good question this week and uh I was sorry, Counselor DeBreen, uh we uh um. And then we thought was worthwhile, we talked about it because we look, uh one thing, we look at On Sound and Hanover and and how high they are for their SCA and C task one. The 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 one driver there, first off, they are busy, they're they're busier spots, especially on sounds, there's more of these critical calls. The thing is though, there we're only looking at the municipality as a whole. So when you measure those targets, just as municipality as a whole, we can cover those quite well. But when you compare that a place like Southgate or Chatsworth or or Gray Hallens, you know, they have these urban areas, but then you have such a wide area. It doesn't take much, especially I I think in uh Southgate, there was four cardiac arrests. So when you you have that and you spread that out, you you have to kind of understand the numbers to see what we're kind of up against when you see these low numbers. In nine two thousand and nineteen, we put this together and I just thought it was good, we shared with Counselor DeBreen. Uh they helped us put together really what the uh population looked like. So what what populations within our five minute, seven minute, fourteen minute and nineteen minute, you notice we took one minute off of those targets of how much we can serve. Uh we do better than what the population can serve because obviously people are in urban areas when they do calls and and stuff like that. But uh um overall, uh we are doing well compared to where our population is compared to where uh we're we're meeting our response times. This is just a picture to show you uh where for sudden cardiac arrest and C task ones on a realistic drive time, that's how far we can go with the areas to meet those targets where they're a little bit more difficult. And this was put together by ORH, it's another way of looking at it. That this is areas where you can see that we are zero to five minutes with a really dark green. And as the green lightens up, five to seven, uh seven to nine. And then you can see areas of the county in red where we have trouble getting to in fifteen minutes. And uh if you look at some of the areas that we're looking at, uh you know, we're adding Fever Sham and the Eaton Base and Thornberry. It'll help and and Cobble Beach will help you get rid of those fifteen minute areas. I think it's always good to look at ninety percentiles for everything collectively and in two thousand and twenty-three, uh it is our our ninetieth was fifteen twenty-one, which is good because we're almost at sixteen minutes last year, so that's good that it's come down. Um our average response time is now under eight minutes again. In two thousand and twenty-two, we're nineteenth out of fifty-two for response times, which is pretty good. So I would say really good comparatively when you only look at the the size, because we have such a big geographic area. Um there was only one service that was bigger than us that was in that same of response time category. As far as uh this year for uh response times uh uh in helping with those, this is a year that we add two additional trucks and we are appreciative for that, we can use those resources. They are going to Hanover and On Sound, eventually the Hanover car will go to uh Eaton. But e- even with that, the Hanover car will help Hanover, but it will also help West Gray. Uh if if Hanover does a call or Durham does a call, it'll be there to back it up, so we're not sitting it out apart. It's the same with On Sound, On Sound will help Georgian Bluffs and it'll help Meaford. And then to a certain extent, it helps Chatsworth, because a lot of the time Chatsworth and On Sound are our busiest bases. Over forty percent of our call volume comes out of those two bases, particularly in the On Sound area. But if we can keep cars in On Sound, that keeps Chatsworth and Chatsworth and it keeps Craig Leaf and Craig Leaf and Meaford and Meaford. So that we're not sitting halfway in between, you don't have Meaford sitting in On Sound and uh and Craig Leaf sitting in Thornberry. So that that's really going to help those response times in those areas by, e- even though it's in that town, there's a wider breadth that we're going to be able to capture. Okay, uh that's all I have for response times, but I I we we did talk about this just as the scene management and with the warden about the Durham and Chesley emergency closure. Uh we are facing that now, when I wrote this presentation, I've actually hadn't closed yet, but then I realized when I'm actually saying it's already closed, so just. I just want to let you know that it is a bit of an error when I said that, but uh it it is closed at night from five to seven and Chesley actually is closed from five to seven. With our modeling tool now that we have, we're able to model uh what this looks like with these closures. Uh we we have determined that they there is really low numbers going into those hospitals at night, so the impact to us, there is some, but it's small. And we also looked at the Durham base location and based upon RH, their their statement is that's the base is still in the right location. E- even though there is a s- only a small impact on our response time, there is considerations. One is longer treatment and transport time, so we'll be with the patients longer. Uh if we go to Hanover, it's not as bad because our base is side by side, so we will clean up if we need to do cleanup there. If we go to uh um uh Mount Forest, uh we 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 generally have, we can use hospital cleaning supplies, we have our own cleaning supplies. And we generally have enough stock in our truck, but if it was called that would really depleted us, potentially as we'd be out of service till we got back to our own base, but that is really a rare situation. The one thing we'll have to watch and it's not just us going to these uh peripheral hospitals, but if Hanover gets overloaded with patients, there's a chance we could be on offload delay. So th- those are considerations, we have had some times where we have been on bypass for our for our C task to five, C three to five, where we take them to other hospitals. Uh because they're inundated, but uh um we haven't seen that yet, but that's something that is a possibility that broke. And this just goes to show, uh I don't know if you can see it or not, but ORH, they they did uh as a base phasing, I actually asked them to phase in two thousand and twenty-five so we could see some results. Uh the food going to Meaford and some of those chains we're doing, but just we just used as a baseline because all our enhancements are at night. But uh you can see here, that's the diff- that that's the one with it with it open and then with it closed, and this is the one with the difference. And you can see there, um you you can see a bit of impact in Southgate and West Gray, but to the overall response time, it makes a difference for one second. So uh but it is something for us to watch. I think it's good to have this tool, a lot of it before was based upon gut and that's it guts good, I think that you always have to listen to your gut, but having numbers to back it up is really important, so. Uh just to give you an idea of what we're uh able to do now with our modeling tool.
Thank you, Kevin. Boy, a lot of information there, a lot of pieces to move around. Do a great job at it. Any questions for Kevin this morning? Counselor Mattress House?
Thank you through you, the warden, uh to a question to staff, then thank you very much. I do appreciate the breakdown of the municipalities, it helps us be able to bring that picture back to our local communities. Um and it it is, I I think it's a good cautionary note to think about those those one-off events that you've mentioned that can skew the the numbers. My question would be is is from my understanding of reading the report and the descriptions about the levels. Uh fractures from physical activity, that would be like a, I guess if there's a potential for head injury, that would be a two, but the rest, the the rest of them would be down to a three, four or five. And I have a follow-up question.
Yeah, like somebody in severe pain would still be up to a C task two, like but if they're on severe pain, it could be a C task three.
Thank you, and through you, the warden, as a follow-up as well, I'm wondering if the it, do you have access to breaking down those percentages further by rural versus settlement areas? Um for municipalities such as ours where it is so extensive, the geography is so extensive, I'm just wondering about. What those numbers would look like if you looked at everybody in the rural areas versus the calls that are in the more significant population areas? And I imagine that would be the same thing with Southgate and West Gray as well.
Based upon the analytics, we have uh like for Blue Mountains, it's really under Blue Mountains. Um and for Southgate's broken down into the three uh original uh municipalities. It it can be done though, because there's a long and lat for every call. So it's something that we could access if that was what you would like, um but I just, I don't have it at my fingertips, that's not something that I can draw up.
Thank you. Counselor Kivany?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to uh Kevin. Kevin, I wonder if I can ask you about increased call volumes. Uh we recognize and first of all, congratulations on exceeding your response times and continuing to approve those times. That's that's amazing and we're we're very grateful for that. Uh but back to my question then in relation to the increased call volumes, um is most of that attributed to growth in the county, do you think? Or what impact does our shortage of family physicians have on uh the many, many orphan patients that live in in the county? And their preference then to call you over trying to get to a hospital?
My my personal opinion is is that uh that it's probably a combination of a lot of things. It's a combination of uh growth, uh a combination of more tourists. You notice during the pandemic, we hardly had any car accidents, you know, stuff like that, like call volume tore down during that time. Um I think that the lack of community resources uh for people to reach out to and care in the home contributes to this. I think primary care, I think emergency rooms are used where they can't get access and same with paramedic services. I always think of paramedic service as kind of the canary in the coal mine. Because we're really around and we're the first sensitivity for things start to go bad, they call us and the sensitivity around that, so. Um I think it's multitude of things.
Well, then didn't I think I recall from RH's work that um demographics and and aging population also?
Yeah, the demand based upon our aging population, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's in the RH report, but it's going to be a significant demand and it's going to actually increase over the next ten years. Uh this is quite high, I I don't have it at my fingertips, but we go to the RH report, it does talk about that, about the demand, the amount of calls uh with their aging populations, sorry.
Counselor Patterson?
Through you, Mr. Warden, thank you, Kevin, for the presentation, I always appreciate that data. Can you share uh when fire and rescue is called out? And is there any um training between the paramedics and the fire and rescue uh departments?
So a a lot of the deteriorated responses now have been focused on where we know time is of the essence and that a difference can be made by sending fire departments, sending fire departments to every medical call. There really is no change in outcome, but there is change in outcome for severe, what we call obvious immediate threats. So that'd be like cardiac arrest, respiratory arrest, choking, car accidents where there's entrapments and to tell you the truth, all car accidents, we can use the extra hands. There are special circumstances, but that's the majority of the calls that we know. And we're so appreciative of the fire departments, we have really good relationships with fire departments in Gray County. I don't know if you know Mark or Kurt, but he's a supervisor with us and uh he's just a real gem. But uh he's actually, he's on with the fire chiefs and he comes from a fire background and he's like a real life MacGyver, so he fits in well. Um but uh does training with them and Kyle is, we have, we have lots of paramedics that are firefighters, so even down to the auto pulse, when we launch the auto pulse, we go up and train with them.
Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you and through you, Warden, thank you, Kevin, I just want to thank you for being so quick with a very detailed response over a weekend. It was unexpected and very much appreciated, um it really helped put perspective into the numbers. Um I I did want to just tie something together between Counselor Kivany's comments about, you know, what is driving? The the change or the the increased calls and the lack of family health teams. Where the orphaned are orphaned residents that don't have that follow-up and CAO Windgrove, you know, Windgrove's comment about the aging population. If they're not getting the checks, the check-ins with their family health team because they a lack or inability to get there. Um that's going to drive more calls as well. So I think it it it's all tied together and how do we, how do we solve that? So that we're not having those emergency calls. And comes back to that um paramedic, the the. Thank you. The 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 paramedic uh team that goes in and do does some of those health checks, if that can be maintained and expanded upon, that will help alleviate those emergency calls, correct?
Yes, that's correct, uh I just heard this morning, I say to Kim, we're up to four hundred and seventy-eight patients now on our CP program. That's not including our clinics, our SOS, where we carry a hundred to a hundred and fifty patients at any given time, so that program is really uh booming. Um I I do sit on the primary care advisory council for uh for Ontario Health West and there is uh like most of this group is physicians. And they are having a real look at how to attach people to primary care, like that is one of the things that they are working on. Um so it's not, because people aren't working on it, but it it lack of primary care is uh is it is it is a need, there is is a problem.
Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, good morning, County Council. Thanks again, Kevin, for all the work that you and your department does. In your map with the response times, how does a a neighboring county assist in lowering response times? So there was a red area in the western part of Sullivan Township, close proximity to Chesley. I'm just wondering why that would be red when there is, I believe, an ambulance situated in Chesley?
Yeah, when we did that was modeling that we took into account them coming across border. So for code four calls, there is no border, the border is is seamless. So uh the thing is, is I don't, I don't know Bruce County and their coverage of Chesley, whether through those years if they had Chesley at night, because that's two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two. So they are at night now, uh so that would probably make a difference there as well. But also Chesley is an area that, you know, that they obviously would pull, you know, different areas too, so, but the but it is seamless for across the border.
Okay, all right, uh Counselor Apples?
Thank you and through you, Warden, too.
Thank you. And through you, Warden, too. Mr. McNam. Um, in the report there, you said that Chesley and Durham and Chesley were closed from five PM to seven PM. Chesley's also closed every weekend as well, too, correct? That just wasn't noted in there.
I'd have to check. I believe that is correct. It is against you, but I'd have to check that. Yeah, I can look on our operational log. It goes out on that, but I I I'm pretty sure this.
And if I could, I don't know just how that's going to be being closed but being open seven days a week through the day. And as you said, from the numbers that we see, the emergency calls in the evening from, I think it was ten until six AM, uh, ten PM to six AM is less than one, uh, per, um, per day. But in the weekends at Chesley, those numbers change now and being closed. How that may affect, we may see some effect going forward on that when they're closed twenty four hours for, uh, Saturday, Sunday on the weekends. The challenge.
Okay. Are we ready for the vote? I'll call it. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, the next report is a, uh, Ministry of Health Service Review Final Report, and Kevin is going to be giving that one as well. If I had a mover and seconder. Counselor Kivany, Counselor Patterson. Thank you, Kevin.
So we're, we're pretty excited about this, uh, even though it seems like such a long time ago. Um, uh, that this is our Ministry of Health Service Review. And we really only have one opportunity every three years to show, uh, the ministry about how we, you know, we we do what's required to run an ambulance service at the, at the core of it. So, uh, this, the, so the recommendation is that we receive, uh, this report for information and you'll see the, uh, the final document as opposed to it is attached to the report. So to meet the requirements, providing line ambulance services every three years, we have to, uh, undergo a service review and it's similar to what a hospital accreditation would be. We we complete the most recent review, uh, December of twenty twenty two, and it took us almost a year to get the final report because of, uh, January tenth. Uh, it the findings that we, uh, met the requirements of the of the service review. And, uh, we have a license now to operate it until, of the service until, uh, June second, twenty twenty six. Which is interesting because we're really just wrapping this up and, uh, next year, you know, probably in October, twenty twenty five, we'll be back again. So. So during COVID, uh, it did unprecedented times. I'm sure everybody's tired of hearing that word, but it was, um, for us and also for the ministry to complete these reviews. Uh, so they had to come up with a modified way of doing reviews because they didn't want to come on site. Uh, so normally they would show up here with a team of ten or twelve people. There would be three or four people looking at administration and then there'd be, you know, six, seven people on the road, uh, looking at our stations or trucks. Assessing patient care, looking at our vehicles for maintenance and stuff like that. But this review was strictly, uh, uh, more or less, uh, documentation, uh, providing evidence through documentation. But they still looked at administration, operations, quality improvement. Again, there was no write outs and, uh, the ambulance service review does not look at our finite financial, uh, portions at all. So, uh, the final report outlines observations the review team makes. Um, and and from their review, there were three observations made and comparatively to two thousand and nineteen, then there were six. And when I think about the review and and what we faced during review and it was unprecedented times and we still had to run the service like like the requirements of the ministry. And to get only three observations, I think that's a really good thing. Um, uh, comparatively to the number of, uh, questions and answers and evidence that we have to produce. So the three observations, uh, the first one was around ensuring that paramedics, uh, ensure they have the knowledge and skills are maintained. This came down to us, uh, if they released a, a, a document, equipment standards or something like that, is to ensure that every document that, uh, we receive, that the paramedics acknowledge they receive it and they understand it. So we we missed a few through there, uh, they they haven't been acknowledged. Uh, but we have, uh, fixed that since, uh, we we release everything immediately. And then we have a learning management program that, uh, every quarter they have to go in and, uh, sign off that they received and acknowledge, uh, all these these documents. They can become quite lengthy after each quarter. The next one was around not meeting our C task two targets. And, uh, so that, uh, we talked to them about what our plans are with ORH to meet those plans. And the last one was around, um, staffing, just like any service during COVID, staffing was an issue. We did have down staffing through some of the times. So, uh, we have definitely improved from there. We're not out of the woods yet, but, uh, definitely a lot better than what it was for staffing. So, uh, the the final report, uh, the the issues have been addressed in that. We have had an inspector follow up with us. Uh, Gray County was commended for its efforts, uh, for preparation and also, uh, the quality assurance and quick, new quality improvement programs that we have in place. So just in summary, uh, it takes a lot of work to be able to meet require much of this review. There's not uncommon for some places to get ten, twelve or not even be successful in a review. So for us to only have three, I believe, it's very, uh, speaks well of the the staff and the support that we have. So from the paramedics to our management team to council and the CAO. And I can't say enough about all our support as well from transportation, finance, the human resources, GIS, IT. Uh, it really takes an entire team to be able to do this. And, uh, we're really proud of where we're at. And again, but we still continue to try to improve upon, uh, the service all the time.
Thank you, Kevin, and congratulations again on that successful certification. Uh, I'm I'm not surprised, quite honestly. Uh, you guys do a great job. Um, are there any questions for Kevin on that one? Counselor Gray.
Thanks. And through you, Warden Milton. My only question is anecdotally here nowadays of of individual driver habits, uh, not being what they should be on some of the roadways and inhibiting the flow or the passage, um, of emergency vehicles. Uh, do you document in any way, shape or form, um? I guess the occurrence rate perhaps of, is this getting worse? Uh, is it, uh, becoming more prevalent? What kind of an impact is it having, uh, on your resources and your responses? And then on an item like that where then you are able to, um, pass that along as a kind of a direct conduit to the province. Um, to see if the province can kind of work with transportation or the attorney general, um, in terms of increasing fines, um, punishment, whatever, uh, might be necessary. But it it is something that, uh, we hear, uh, you see some messaging out there occasionally in terms of, you know, be aware, pull over, um, but what kind of, um, you know, I guess, what are you hearing from your end and how do you respond to it?
I would say it's a rare occurrence that we hear like directly from a paramedic that somebody didn't get out of the way. If I think about myself on the road. Um, safety is your number one concern. You do want to go like and get there as fast as you can safely. Um, but but as far as like saying that people aren't getting over and getting out of the way, like, I I think that people are generally pretty good. You see, like, drivers try their best. Sometimes you think about downtown, how congested it is. It's hard to push people because there's really nowhere to go and harder to get pushed. Sometimes you cause confusion. So, uh, um, it it's to say it doesn't happen, but it's not as if it's something out there. They have changed the laws around, uh, pulling over for emergency vehicles. Uh, like as far as like, like when you were on the side of the road for safety, that's been really welcomed. I think there's a lot more awareness of that, like slow down, move over if you're able to. We're a lot more aware now with blocker vehicles, like actually blocking, you'll see car accidents now where initially if the supervisor is the first one there, they'll block. But then we'll actually be blocked by fire trucks because there's a real issue with people crashing into accidents. So those are kind of things that we're aware of. Um, but but overall, um, yeah, I I I still think people try to do their best. There are people that sometimes aren't paying attention. But, uh, but but I I don't like, it's not something that's on as far as awareness as a as a big concern.
Anyone else? Any questions? Call a question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Kevin. One more report from Kevin regarding the sole source ambulance purchases for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Would someone care to move that, please? Counselor Mackey and Counselor Dicker. Kevin.
Great. I'll just read out the recommendation that, uh, report PSRCW zero five twenty four regarding the sole source of ambulance purchases for four point twenty four and twenty twenty five be received. And the purchase of seven ambulances be sole sourced from Demir's ambulances. And the staff be authorized to order the three budgeted ambulances in twenty twenty four for the deployment enhancement and four ambulances that are scheduled in twenty twenty five ahead of budget approval. And that, uh, actually be taken prior to council approval as per section twenty six point six B of procedure by law, five one three four two two. So a bit about the background of this, and it's pretty much the same story that I came here with, uh, last year. Um, nothing really has changed other than the price has gone up further. Um, so the Ministry of Health, uh, they regulate the vendors of who can provide ambulances. It's a very strict standard for, uh, ambulances to be built in the province. Uh, at one time there was two vendors, Demir's and Crestline. In two thousand and eighteen, they merged into one company. They they still sell their, uh, separate, uh, vehicles, but, uh, they're really are one company. So it really does, uh, create problems when we talk about purchasing bylaws and, uh, come to get, uh, to go to tender for these these vehicles. Since the merger, um, we've also had COVID, but, uh, we have seen a significant increase in analysis. Uh, hundred and eighteen thousand or sixty seven percent. We go over the last five years, which is roughly a ten point two percent increase. So Demir's again and Crestline continue to build their separate designs, but it really is only one company that we can get a quote from. Over the years, we have standardized our fleet. What we would do is we would get more or less of a five year pricing commitment, be able to keep those same type type of trucks. This, this helps the paramedics to be able to know where equipment is, but it also helps with maintenance and repairs. The mechanics know the trucks and they have the equipment on hand to fix them. Our our, before the enhancement, our our capital plan, uh, we had to fifteen ambulances in the system. It was nine ambulances, uh, for frontline and then we'd have six pairs that you have to available for breakdowns and maintenance. Uh, during COVID nineteen, we've seen, uh, significant challenges, uh, with manufacturing of ambulances. And, uh, what we're seeing now is we normally do a a tender in, uh, February and, uh, we have the ambulance by October. Now we're looking twenty and we're almost twenty four months out before we get these vehicles. So we're really, uh, even just being aware of the vehicles that are ordered, uh, as of today, if this goes through, we'll have eleven vehicles on order, which we've never ever seen before in our history. So for the enhancement plan from twenty twenty four to twenty thirty three, uh, that that was approved through the budget, uh, is, uh, what we've done is we've, uh, increased that by seven ambulances, which will be five frontline to take on those new shifts that will be over the next ten years and to add two spares. The results being added in twenty twenty four, what it will be then, it will be, uh, three being added in twenty twenty four, uh, one in twenty twenty five and three in twenty twenty seven. And these ambulances are a six year cycle. When we looked at the original plan, which had been up staffing eight, twelve hour shifts, uh, we would have needed seven trucks because one's a twenty four hour car in twenty thirty one. Um, but with with the budget reductions, again, we dropped that from eleven ambulances down to seven. The one other thing that's changed with, uh, the mirrors is that they don't guarantee the price anymore. Uh, because it's so far out, they try to do their best to predict the price. But, uh, they don't guarantee it. As an example, uh, the ambulances we ordered in twenty twenty two, we got them at the end of twenty twenty three and they increased about six thousand dollars. So, uh, Demir says provide us with a quote on the ambulances of, uh, two ninety five eighty to forty six, net of HST. Uh, we did look for efficiencies. We reduced, uh, some, uh, items in there, saved a ten thousand dollars a unit, trying to keep these prices down. So it would have even been worse if we didn't save that money. Twenty twenty four budget includes seven ambulances, three to meet the needs of the deployment, uh, enhancement. And this is where it kind of gets confusing because we ordered the ambulances last year. Uh, we had to move them ahead to the end of this year's budget. So there's really four that we ordered last year in this year's budget. Plus, we're asking for the three for the enhancement. And then because they're so far behind, we're actually wanting to order next year's analysis, which is twenty twenty five. So the total four. So at the end of the day, there's eleven analysis in order. One savings that we're looking at is, uh, uh, the power load units, uh, is to reduce them and use them twice over. So we will be, uh, having some savings there. There will be less when we sell them at the end, but, uh, there will be an upfront savings. It's roughly forty two thousand dollars for a power load unit. So around, uh, price increases, the county seen the price of ambulances increased significantly. Uh, two ambulances were ordered in twenty twenty two at a price of two hundred and thirty nine thousand, three oh two. In comparison, the cost of two animals in twenty twenty three was two sixty one. Uh, the price increased by thirty four thousand or thirteen point two percent since twenty twenty three. Or, uh, fifty five thousand, twenty three point six percent since twenty twenty two. We we hope that, uh, by ordering these ambulances early, there will be some savings that, uh, every year that goes by, the price does go up. So, uh, there there is, there may be potentially be some savings by ordering early. Um, and just around legislative requirements, they the vehicles have to meet the vehicle standard. I know that's a lot of stuff and it is confusing, but, uh, um, I I guess really what it breaks down to is, uh, we ordered four vehicles last year. We moved those forward this year because they, um, that we didn't get them last year, so we had to put them in this year's budget. With the approval of the enhancement, we need three trucks to add the two plus a spare. So that's three. And then we're asking to be able to purchase four more that would be purchased in twenty twenty five. Just because we probably won't get them to twenty twenty six. And if we don't keep ordering a year ahead, we won't have them. And, uh, I I don't really see much choice right now. We've delegated to the minister on this problem and our association's talking about it. The lack of, uh, of suppliers in the marketplace definitely impacting it. Um, but we we really don't have a lot of choice. That's that's the thing.
Thank you, Kevin. And it almost sounds like a high school math question, you know? Yeah, you had this many, take this many away, but split this one and divide that one. How many ambulances does Kevin have? Holy macro. Okay, uh, yeah, and and also, you know, you, I don't know, I'm sure everybody gets the questions. Why, why the elevated budget numbers this year? Well, inflation is only running three percent. Well, sixty seven percent in five years. That's a lot more than three a year. So there you go. That's just one example. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden. And and actually, the timing of the report was was excellent through you to Kevin. I had an opportunity. A resident had asked about the budget and the increase and how the county plays into those things. And I use this as an example. And your jaw dropped, you know, three hundred thousand dollars for an ambulance. You have to order two years in advance and there's no guarantee on the price. And to Warden Milton's equation, he's like, and how far were they traveling and the speed and all of that other to come up with an answer? But there's, there's just no guarantees and we're at the mercy of a one source supplier. There's. Again, how do you answer that question? It's like, how come there is such an increase? But here, here's just one example that we have no control over.
Counselor Gray, and then I'll go to Counselor Boronio.
Thanks. And through you, Warden Milton, you kind of touched on a little bit, you, uh, preambled or led into my question. The report indicated fifteen ambulances in the ten year capital plan. Um, eleven is the number that we've circled right now in terms of what's kind of, um, in in order or in process. Seven of those units, uh, are scaling up the service or enhancements. So is the projection then from that fifteen in the ten year capital plan that from twenty twenty six, twenty seven, we will only have four more ambulances to replace? Uh, and then what is the cycle for replacement that we currently have? Uh, you touched upon the reserve contributions needing to go up. But what is the standard cycle that we've been working with? Thanks.
So a- as of today, like with no enhancement, we run with fifteen ambulances and which nine are frontline and six are spare. And, uh, here it's up into these ratios here, but roughly one point five. We we've actually, when we, when we reach our full, uh, enhancement, and that'll be starting in twenty twenty seven. We'll have fourteen frontline ambulances and we'll have eight spares. So we've actually reduced the number of spares in the system. Uh, but we, you know, we think in those savings, we're trying to reduce where we can. The, uh, mileage and 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 turnover, uh, we use six years, some places use use five, a lot use six. You know, potentially, you know, for some spares, we might be able to get seven, but a lot of our, like, we have trucks right now that are close to four hundred thousand kilometers. Uh, we usually, you know, it's two seventy five to to little threes, three fifty. But there's a lot of trucks right now, at least a lot, a few anyways, that are really around that four hundred thousand, which is getting pretty high. But there's a lot of trucks right now, at least a lot, a few anyways, that are really around that four hundred thousand, which is getting pretty high. Yeah, so like having those ratios of spares, though it doesn't take long to uh to run out of spares, like you need spare trucks around. Especially when you have change of shift. If a cruise out during the day and the night car car comes in, we don't have a crew, you can't get them off. So having the spares for maintenance and have spares for change of shift are pretty important. We we we, again, we we went on the lower side of this. Uh, it's something we're gonna have to watch, uh, but we were trying to, you know, maximize the efficiency. Of uh amount of vehicles we had to buy, as you can see, we we cut four.
Can't imagine a GM lasting that long, but. Good for Pat's mechanic, so they do a great job out there, keeping those things on the road. Any other questions? I'll call the question. All those, wait, oh, sorry, Council Board on you, my mistake. Go ahead, Peter.
Uh, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Kevin. First, thank you for juggling everything you're doing with uh Soul Source. I just have one question. It's on the the end of your report, um, that they there's no. Guarantee on pricing whatsoever. Is there not a maximum based on um? Or or targets they have to prove? I see they went up six thousand. Is there any cap saying by percentage? For the ambulances for when they're delivered, saying, you know, uh, to to a cap of ten percent or? Is it strictly market factors and the you're dealing with when you get the final bill?
We we've asked them about that, about being able to guarantee a price of even the chassis or the conversion on the other side, but. You can't get them to guarantee anything right now. I wish we could. The questions have been asked for sure, like, I I don't like this either.
Thank you. Counselor Cantor.
When you buy a new car, as we, Mr. Warden, uh. You're e- even year to year, a certain percentage of the increase in cost i- is really enhancements, uh. Higher technology, uh, more bells and whistles and so on, and I would imagine in an ambulance, there's a a great. Uh, potential for added costs just through changing technology, and can you estimate, you know, a per? What percentage of the increase might actually be for uh uh? More value in in the vehicle?
I think one of the uh, like, as far as the significant costs is the power load. When we first uh bought power load, they were twenty five thousand, now they're forty two. So they went up significantly. Um, we actually reduced the amount of the truck by ten thousand. Uh, we've talked about this in our capital planning, about going away from uh uh Panasonic ToughBooks. That we're actually going to an iPad, which takes less infrastructure up front. Uh, so we're able to get rid of a Phoenix boom mount and a and a Havastock, which that was probably three thousand dollars. We were able to get, we. We, one thing that was the a gas fired pro heat that really doesn't have this efficiency that we thought it would, it's not really user friendly. Because in times of cold, it doesn't keep the window clear. So and then also when they, when they break, they're expensive to fix, and we removed that, those five thousand dollars. So we we tried to look to see if there's anything we could cut out. Um, the units really haven't changed, and I think the only thing that we've added is another another cabinet, which was five hundred dollars, but. A lot of stuff we tried to to cut versus add. But the power load definitely pushes that price forward, but us being able to use them for two cycles, that helps in that as well.
Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. Kevin, you mentioned earlier in your presentation that you, or at least the association, had delegated to the ministry. What was the response that you received back? Because this is a huge problem for the entire province, and are we anticipating that? The Ministry of Health is is going to do anything about more than just one vendor?
To Mr. Warden, to uh Counselor Mackey, um, we have delegated at A M O at least twice on this matter. Um, we asked them to consider establishing a vendor of record. At least to us for a floor price for all of the services. I mean, right now, we are all, every one of us competing. Um, for that one resource. Um, so either establish a vendor of record to establish a price that we are, we can all use to plan effectively or. Approve some competition in the marketplace. The fact that Demers and Crestline were, you know, able to merge without that. You know, kicking off some sort of a competi- competition concern is concerning. Um, we did not get um any um. Confirmation or any response back from the ministry that they might be taking action on this. That may well be happening behind the scenes, but it's not something that's been communicated to us.
I know there's some local manufacturing down at the south end of the township. I'm sure they could slam something together, Al, a lot cheaper than what this is, but. That's out of my hands. All right, um, any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Why don't we take a ten minute recess and we'll come back and finish the last two items, three items with the uh consent item, so we'll do that. One minute warning. Thank you, Rob. We'll bring this meeting back to order. Next report is in regards to the Glenelg Klondike. And the mayhem that's happening down there. Sarah Johnson is here to give that report. Someone care to move it, please? Counselor Kivony, thank you, and Counselor Dickert, thank you, a second. Sarah, welcome and good morning.
It's been a while since I pressed that button. Um, thank you again, Warden, uh, good morning. This report is a follow up report from a report that was presented last January regarding trespass and damage issues that were occurring in the Glen Elk. Klondike Forest property. Um, from that report, there was direction from council to explore some options that could uh number one, solve trespass issues, reduce potential for damage in the forest and help minimize. Potential conflict between the motorized and non-motorized uses. First slide I included. So this is in the report as well, but this is an overview of the property and some of the um. Things that have been put in place. So as it it's not very, it's not showing up very well on on um the slide here, but you can see. Uh, where we've got gates, where we've got signage, where we have um, where we have our trails. And then unfortunately, those red little dots are where ATVs are so known to be um accessing the property. What's not shown on this map and because um? Just of my experience in this role and knowing what we have done in the past was some boulders that have also been put in place. And those two red dots along Hamilton Lane, I believe there were boulders placed in those areas, but obviously. Um, they're not working, but the the these are the measures that I wanted to show in this map that have been taken to date. Um, to try and me mitigate this this issue. So what I want to discuss today is um the the main areas that staff investigated when it came to the potential solutions. Um, with regards to the trespass issue. One of which was have a conversation with West Gray staff about a number of things, including the ORV bylaw. The their complaint process, as well as a consideration of a stop up and close of a portion of Hamilton Lane. Some bylaw enforcement options that we could take with the county, and then a consideration to make um. The trails in the forest multi-use. So when we just had, uh, when we met with. West Gray staff, uh, we discussed the bylaw and the removal of the. Um, road allowances in roads from ATV use. One of the big takeaways from that conversation was. Removing those roads would remove the use, yes, but it would remove the use from everyone and all users, those using it legally and those using it. Not legally, um, and it would also create additional bylaw enforcement off um issues as. In all likelihood, the ones that are unlawfully using those areas are probably going to continue to do so. So as a result, um, staff, Gray County staff, were no longer recommending um that recommend, the recommendation of the previous report. Um, to admit, to make the request to West Gray to update their ORV bylaw. The other discussion points that we had uh with West Gray was their complaint process, which is directly related to bylaw matters. And again, if we remove road allowances, there is no more mechanism for them to assist in that in that um capacity. And obviously, it would be less effective to control the problem. It's also really important to note that the unauthorized ATV use. In our county forest is not strictly a bylaw off issue with West Gray. Um, it's a Gray County matter as well. Um, because the their old RV bylaw only applies to ro- roads and road allowances. Similar to the bylaw issues that I just went over, the removal of a portion of Hamilton Lane through a stop up and close, which was suggested. With regards to the previous report, um, again. Creates those issues where um we're removing the ability for West Gray um. To enforce their bylaw, and it doesn't create. Changing ownership doesn't really remove the unauthorized uses. So as a result, staff are not um. Recommending any of the uh those proposed uses um that were discussed with West Gray. The next item that we investigated was the consideration of bylaw enforcement. And this was, this um option requires a bylaw be drafted. Um, but not only for this property, but for all county forest properties as well as um, in all likelihood, this. But not only for this property, but for all county forest properties, as well as in all likelihood, the CP rail trail. And then we would require someone to enforce the bylaw. And that the county right now is currently not equipped with this staff, with, with staff or with contract staff to enforce the bylaw. And, oh, sorry, a bylaw of this nature. And so at this time, we wouldn't be recommending that as well. The final item that was discussed at the last meeting, or the meeting that that was, sorry, with the previous report, was the consideration of making the trails in this forest multi-use, working with the club and trying to have them monitor and help maintain those trails so that the trespass issues became less. When we look at these types of requests, we use tests. Or, sorry, when we look at these types of requests, we use the recreational trails master plan, and there's some tests that we need to or, sorry, there's criteria that needs to be met. And those criterias are, is the new use consistent with the long-term preservation of the forest and land? Is the news compatible with the existing uses and the infrastructure that is already there? And is enforcement an issue? And does the county have the resources to provide adequate enforcement and protection if this new use is introduced? Well, as you, as we've already previously discussed, we know that we can't meet those tests. And so this was not an option that we would be recommending at this time. So what are we recommending? The to provide a little bit of an update, we have had some conversations with the Glenelg Ski Club since the last report, and they have noted that there is, there has been a reduction of these trespass issues. They still exist. We and our outside staff have also noted that the signage has remained intact. So that's also encouraging. These, along with the other methods that were noted in the report, such as having staff be present a little bit more frequently in the high, in the busy season, working with the local police force, increasing education through the local ATV club. All of these things, we are, are recommending that we continue to do these things and that sorry, that we, that the existing measures that we've already put in place are, would continue. In addition to that recommendation, we are also recommending that once the harvest is complete, because there is a harvest occurring in this forest presently, that the repairs that are required for those sections that were previously damaged be completed. So that is what I had today. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions for Sarah's report? Counselor Gray.
Just one question. When you're talking signage, there's more frequently individuals now that are able to gain access to trails with e-bikes. And it's not just, you know, gas-powered engines that are causing forest degradation now, but you can have a lot of fun with getting into areas now with, with e-bikes and similar means. Does your signage consider, I guess, emerging trends? I'd think of three-stage in, in Collingwood area that certainly has had troubles with individuals leaving what were marked trails even. But e-bikes becoming more common are also being a bigger concern now in some areas of sensitive forest areas. So just wondered about what your signage contemplates.
So I know that the signage in particular in this location, I believe it is strictly related to ATV use. Along the trail on a CP rail trail, which we often use interchangeably with our forest properties. We state that it is, that the uses that are permitted and in accordance with X, Y, and Z. In the case of ATVs, it says with a permit, because we have an agreement with the club to do that to for someone to use if they have, if they are permitted through that. So we have it's certainly something that's on our radar, but we don't have specific ones that speak to e-bikes in particular. But yeah, it's, it's definitely becoming more of a common call that I get with regards to those uses for sure. So it's something we'll be looking into.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. Thanks, Sarah. My question, I guess, is in regards to the discussions with the ATV clubs. I know they have a warden program that they operate on our rail trail, and I mean, that's the only enforcement I've ever seen on our rail trail. So are they actually legislated at all to be able to do anything to protect the rail trail? Or is it just volunteers with a vest on, or you just describe what authority they do have? Thanks.
Through, through you, Warden. You're correct. They don't have an ability to enforce, but what the club that we use or that we work with is the Deaf and Gray ATV Club, and they have partnerships with both West Gray Police as well as the OPP. And they will come out on patrols with them, and they will assist in any way with enforcement issues as they arise.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Thank you, Sarah. The next item is regarding Midwest Cooperative Services, the potential purchase of leased lands in the town of Dundalk. Kevin's going to be leading us through, which is or Randy, sorry. Sir, geez. Yeah. It, yeah, it's the same Randy that I know, but I just thought I'd try out a new name today. We've heard so much from Kevin today, but anyway, I'll stop. Randy, welcome. Sorry, Randy. I need a mover in a second. Our Counselor Echols and Counselor Boddy. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And is it good afternoon now? Is it good morning still? I'm not sure. We're close. Now I know how Scott feels, because I'm holding up now between you and lunch, so I'll try to make this as quick as we, as I, as I can. So following direction from council that was provided last year, staff have investigated the potential sale of county-owned lands that are in Dundalk that are currently leased to Midwest Co-op. Lease agreement has been in place with Midwest since 2004, and these lands are adjacent to the CP rail trail. So the map on the screen, which I'll pull up now, has, the land shown in red there are the lands that are currently leased to, to Midwest Co-op. The county initially obtained these lands in 2004 as part of the CP rail line property acquisition. Prior to the county obtaining the CP real property, Midwest, which was previously known as Hereon Bay Co-op, had a lease agreement in place with CP at that time for the subject lands, and those same terms have carried over year upon year into the, what's the current lease agreement that's between the county and Midwest. Midwest has been responsible for the payment of the property taxes on the lands, and they also currently pay an annual lease rate of just over $4,000, which staff believe is, is quite a bit low, less than fair market value. The county has permitted Midwest to redevelop and expand the buildings on the leased land, including the construction of a fertilizer plant. Midwest is also proposing in addition to one of those buildings on the leased land. The current lease does not provide for a purchase option and was written to protect the county from any costs that may occur should the lease agreement between Midwest and the county come to an end. The current lease also indicates that the buildings be demolished upon termination or expiration of the lease agreement, and the lands be leveled and repaired and returned back to a condition that's suitable to the county. There is also an additional clause in lease that provides the county with the option to provide notice to the tenant to leave the buildings on the lands and surrender them in a neat and clean condition, which would essentially cause the buildings and improvements to become the property of the county. Despite the terms of the current lease, however, it's never been the county's intent, based on research and looking into some things. It's never been the county's intent to own or operate the buildings that have been built and constructed and paid for by Midwest. These buildings and structures do not align with, with the county's long-term interests or, or policy goals. There are two potential options that could be considered to sell the leased lands to Midwest. And the recommendation that's before committee today would essentially allow either option to be considered by Midwest. So we keep both those options open, depending on how Midwest would like to proceed and move forward. With the ultimate goal at some point to sell the lands either now or later this year or in sometime in the future. Both options would require the current land lease agreement to be terminated, and that's being recommended by our external legal lawyers to, the cleanest option would be to just terminate the, the current lease agreement based on both these options. Well, option one, terminate the, the lease agreement at the end of the term of the current lease agreements. These, this lease agreement currently automatically renews September 30th of every year. So we would provide notice and, and terminate the, the lease at, on September 30th, and then agree to sell the land to Midwest for its fair market value. Both county council and Midwest would need to agree on this option. And one would, like I said, have to provide notice, at least 90 days written notice upon term, for the termination to occur. The county could also agree to not require the buildings be demolished once the lease agreement expires. I think that's, that's Midwest desire is they've obviously spent a lot of money to, to build these buildings over the years. And so that's, that would be also part of the motion, as you can see, that's before you today. Midwest could then purchase the lands following the expiration of the current land lease agreement, so that could occur on or after October 1st of this year. Based on an appraised value or a real estate valuation for the lands, not including the buildings and structures. Option two would be to terminate the existing lease agreement and enter into a new lease agreement with Midwest. This new lease agreement could include a purchase option for the appraised value of the land. As part of the new lease, an escalating fair market lease value for the lands can also be included with the lease premises being appraised again as vacant lands. No matter what option is, is, is picked or pursued, what we're also recommending, no matter what op, option, is that the county would retain the 20-meter corridor of the CP rail trail. There will be a requirement to deal with any of the encroachments that are currently on the CP rail trail lands. A lot of those have already been removed or are planned to be removed by Midwest. The fertilizer plant does encroach onto what we would consider the 20-meter CP rail trail lands that the county would retain. So we could deal with that through an easement agreement or an encroachment agreement with Midwest. We would also recommend that any trail crossings between the buildings, so they own, Midwest also owns a building, you can see on the maps, that says Feed Mill. So that's partially on lands that are owned by the Southgate and partially on the CP rail trail lands that the county would, would retain. Our understanding is that their, their long-term plans are to demolish that building and to rebuild solely on the lands that are currently leased to Southgate. So they remove that in current encroachment that's on the CP rail trail property. So again, those are all details that can be worked out into a new arrangement with Midwest. Depending on whatever option is, is pursued. There are some trail crossings that they have between the Feed Mill property and the fertilizer plant, and you can kind of see it on the, the air photo there. There's a bit of a trail crossing that goes in between the fertilizer plant. As part of the Dundalk Medical Clinic, I don't know if council, some of the councils will recall, there's going to be some trail improvements along this, this stretch. Right now, it's not a really well-defined trail. It's, it's in some cases, you can see, it's just a kind of almost like an open, open parking area, so to speak, or an open driveway in some cases in between some of these buildings. So as part of those trail improvements with the medical clinic, we would look to redefine that trail and look to properly sign and, and design a proper crossing in between those buildings, again, with the safety of the CP rail trail users in mind. So we would recommend those be done regardless of whatever option is, is considered by Midwest. If the leased land is to be sold or the lease continues under a new lease agreement with a purchase option, the leased lands would have to be declared as surplus in accordance with our, our current sale and acquisition of land policy and procedure. We would declare the land surplus, they would occur once the new lease agreement has been executed, if that option is pursued. Or we would do that all as part of the termination of the current lease agreement if Midwest chooses to purchase right away. It's recommended that the value of the leased lands be appraised as, as vacant land, as noted earlier. The county's external council has reviewed this matter and supports a decision to terminate the existing lease and offering Midwest the opportunity to either purchase the leased land at fair, fair market value or to continue leasing to Midwest at fair market rental. Again, with an option to purchase in the future. So should these lands be divested, there would be a future staff report to council, including a draft purchase and sale agreement that we would bring back to council for your consideration. And if the option is to do a new lease agreement, we would bring that lease agreement back to council for your consideration as well. So we do have some closed session content that, that staff would be interested in speaking to, to council, so our recommendation would be to go into closed session to talk about the valuations of, of the leased lands.
Thank you, Randy. So would someone care to move that we go into closed session? Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor Mackey. All those in favor? That is carried. So we'll just take a moment to go into closed session. I'm not sure who needs to. Thank you, Rob. We're now back in open session. I can confirm, we only discussed that item, which we went into closed session to discuss. We gave direction to staff. So we're back to the motion that we had on the floor prior, prior to going to closed session. Is there any further questions or discussion on that one? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. We now bring us back to the one consent item that was pulled, 6A, which is there it is. Nope, not yet. There it is. Correspondence from City Greater Sudbury Amendment to the Occupational Health and Safety Act to clarify the definition of employer. Counselor Nielsen pulled that. Counselor Nielsen, would you like to expand on what you want, what you want done with that, please?
For sure, Warden. Thank you very much for your time. So when talking to the clerk, move the motion as on our agenda is just to support, which would be just to send a letter of support to the municipality of Greater Sudbury. Given the context of this correspondence and kind of the actions you're trying to take in terms of lobbying with the regional government, I think that it'd be helpful if Gray County helps support that lobbying effort. So I'd like to move that in addition to just straight supporting and sending a letter to the municipality that did this motion, I would like to add that we send a letter of support to the ministry and applicable MPPs in various departments as Greater Sudbury did in their motions. Would like to move that in addition to the generals.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second here for that? Counselor Pringle. Kim, do you want to speak to it?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Warden. This is a a significant situation that is going to have a real impact, I think, on all of our operations, our insurance costs and the, and the liability that we're concerned with. It's also been a bit of a moving target. The correspondence from the city of Greater Sudbury was provided as of December 12th. Since that time, so on December 8th, Sudbury filed a motion for rehearing of an appeal of the decision. There are another, other intervenors who took various actions, which I won't go through right now. But at the end of the day, as of February 15th, 2024, the motion to rehear this decision was dismissed. So where we are right now is that there was a decision by the Supreme Court, which was evenly split, that said the city is an employer under the Occupational Health and Safety Act by virtue of having hired a general contractor interpaving because it employed quality and control inspectors on the project. A project owner may qualify as an employer for the purposes of OSHA despite exerting limited or no despite exerting limited or no oversight or control over the construction project. So you're, you can be caught under this act even though you aren't actually on site. The Supreme Court also went on to say the city had breached its obligations under OSHA to ensure that the appropriate health and safety measures and procedures were carried out in the workplace. There is nothing in OSHA that requires the ministry to establish that the city had control over the workers, the employers of third-party contractors or the workplace to prove that it had breached its obligations as an employer. The city was liable as an employer simply because it employed the contractor and the inspectors to work on the site. Liability under public welfare statutes such as OSHA is often concurrent and overlapping and several different actors may be responsible for the same protective functions and measures. So I know even in our own work plan for this year, Pat and his team are really taking on, as well as with our own health and safety people, taking on a really significant push to look at how we're undertaking inspection and, and contract management of all of our construction projects. I think that at the end of the day, this is going to be up to the province to look at the Occupational Health and Safety Act. And if we were going to provide correspondence to the province, that it, it might be best to, uh, support Sudbury and others. Many, many municipalities are very concerned about this. To ask them to take a look and, and to provide greater clarity about the Occupational Health and Safety Act.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor. That is carried. Thank you, Dane. Any other business? Any notice of motion? Okay, we're going to go back into closed session for our training this afternoon. So I'm just going to recess, uh, to lunch and we'll reconvene at well, we'll see if we can make one o'clock because that's when it was scheduled, but we'll try to get as close to one o'clock as we can. So we'll recess. Thank you, Rob. I'll call our meeting back to order. I trust everybody had a good lunch. I know I, I sampled a couple of the pies. They're quite good. So we need a motion to go into closed session to, uh, discuss education or training for members and specifically related to land acknowledgements. Someone to move that, please. Counselor Hutchison, Counselor Keveney. All those in favor. That is carried. So I'll just wait till Rob. There we go. Okay, I can report that we came out of closed session and that we only discussed that item that was listed for us to go in closed session. I need a motion to adjourn. Counselor Matrasovs, Counselor Eccles, all those in favor. We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Enjoy the rest of the day.